Moving on to our next item. Would my fellow board members like to hear the public comments first?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
All right. Is it Jose Cano? We're going to do three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a resident of El Sarino. I'm also the organizer of the No 710 in El Sarino group that is affiliated with the No 710 Action Committee that's made up of all the cities in the line that would be above this tunnel. I was emailed the link to the comments from the meeting of the 10th, and since El Sarino was invoked, I thought I would kindly and respectfully come to educate you on the current state of El Sarino. The past decade, there's been an influx of young professionals, young families. They're more environmentally aware, they're green. We're having a proliferation of solar panel installations because people are getting wise, they're getting educated. Now, Jose Wezar was re-elected last year, and one of the pillars of his reelection was opposition to the 710 tunnel. Because of that, Gloria Molina, former Metro Board member and county supervisor, was a vociferous supporter of this tunnel. Because of her stance and her wishy-washy demeanor during the reelection campaign, she was resoundly defeated by the majority of the residents of El Sarino. So El Sarino has spoken. They do not want a tunnel because we have a shared burden with the people of Pasadena. El Sarino and the location near Huntington Memorial Hospital will be like sitting next to an exhaust pipe. I've heard that this issue is not education-related, but I say it is because you, as the caretakers of the children, of the parents that entrust you with their education, also should be concerned with you providing them with a safe and healthy environment. And pollution, the effects of pollution, as you heard from one of the experts previously, it's a creeping monster. It will affect them over a course of time. You will possibly have a generation that will be affected with a variety of illnesses because of the effects of pollution. I plead with you to support the resolution against this tunnel because it's your duty to look out for the safety and health of the children that are entrusted in your care. All I'm saying is, this is not a good transportation solution. There are others. We are not just opposed to the tunnel. We want smart, well-thought-out transportation solutions that will help mobility in the Southland. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Suho?
My name is Jan Suho. I'm from La Cañada, Flint Ridge. I have more than six years of involvement with the SR 710 issue. I watched the video of your March 10th meeting and heard some statements that concern me. Among them, "I'm not sure this is a child-related issue. How does this tie into public education? I don't think there's a clear impact that has to do with education, and I don't see this as an area of governance that we should be weighing in on." Tonight, I hope to convince you that this is a child-related issue that ties into public education. It does have a clear impact on education and is an area of governance that you should be weighing in on, just as the other four members of the Coalition have done. It's universally agreed that ambient air pollution is a global public health threat. Evidence demonstrating the relationship between air quality and human performance and productivity has become more robust. The metric most often used to evaluate performance and productivity in our children is academic performance. Poor academic performances in childhood is linked to fewer years of schooling completed, low socioeconomic status as an adult, and lower earning potential, and so on. The first link between air pollution and academic performance we think of is illness and absenteeism. Attention to the risks of air pollution has been focused on cancer and diseases of the respiratory and cardiovascular systems. Air pollution makes children sick, which leads to absenteeism and poor performance in school. Children not in school due to pollution-related illnesses are not learning. Because schools receive state funding based on attendance, school districts suffer fiscal consequences of increased absenteeism. Recent investigations of brain function have shown evidence about the link between that function and pollution. Chronic exposure to pollution can negatively impact children's neurological and brain development. Children with high prenatal exposure have lower-than-expected IQs at age five and show less readiness for kindergarten. Gradually, the connections between air pollution and brain architecture are being identified. Brain imaging studies have demonstrated abnormalities in the brain's white matter, which are highly correlated with some psychological and cognitive disorders and deficits. Children exposed to elevated levels of black carbon, tiny particles contained in diesel exhaust, for instance, have decreased ability to perform well on both verbal and nonverbal intelligence and memory assessments. Other evidence, schools with higher levels of pollution have lower standardized test scores, fewer students meeting state standards. Southern California study found that this was the case. Lower reading and math test scales, scores, excuse me. Well, what can we do about it? At the March 10th meeting, I heard, "I don't think this is us. If not you, then who is responsible for helping protect Pasadena schoolchildren from the negative impacts of the SR 710 tunnel? Your city is doing its part by standing unanimously against this project. Oppose the project. I ask that you stand with your city in opposition, reconsider your abstention, and join your partners in the Five Star Coalition as a supporter of its joint resolution." Thank you. And I have some handouts for you that were provided to us by the USC Keck School of Medicine, so I'll leave these and hopefully you can review them.
Thank you. Sarah Gavitt?
My name is Sarah Gavitt, and I'm the Vice President of the West Pasadena Residents Association. At your March meeting, you abstained from voting against the tunnels. The reason given was that you didn't understand that the tunnels are a child-related issue or tied to public education. To answer that question, our logic goes like this. One, the tunnels will significantly increase pollution in our city. Two, this significant increase in air pollution will increase health risks, especially for children. Three, poor children's health will lead to decreased academic achievement. Let me talk about a few of these. One, the tunnels will significantly increase air pollution in Pasadena and El Sarino. This is because the tunnels will track more than 130,000 new vehicles per day in our cities, and because the tunnels are being built to service the port-related cargo from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, there will be high numbers of air-polluting diesel trucks. Moreover, all of the vehicle emissions from the five-mile tunnels will be vented at the portals, creating a pollution hotspot in our cities near numerous schools. In addition, the 210 freeway traveling through northwest Pasadena slopes upward, which significantly increases vehicle emissions here. Item number two, this significant increase in air pollution will increase health risks, especially for children. To quote the Air Quality Management District, "The tunnel alternative will present a significant health risk to local residents." Children are especially sensitive to pollution effects because they weigh less, have more skin surface in relation to their weight, and breathe faster than adults. Consequently, they can be exposed to more chemicals from the environment. In addition, babies and young children put their hands in their mouths and spend more time outdoors than older children or adults. According to the EPA, the children of northwest Pasadena and El Sarino will be impacted more the most. These areas are designated as highly disadvantaged because of their current pollution burden. Consequently, they are particularly vulnerable to additional pollution effects. Item number three, poor children's health will lead to decreased academic achievement. I think this has been well-covered already by Jan Suho and Dr. Avell, so I will not cover that again. To conclude, there is a direct connection between the high levels of pollution expected from the tunnels and academic achievement. According to your website, a program goal of the PUSD is to reduce barriers to learning by providing advocacy to school-aged children and their families. I implore you to live up to this goal. Be an advocate for children's health and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Heffley?
Good evening. My name is Candace Heffley. I am the Chief Finance and Operations Officer at Westridge School for Girls. It's an independent school here in Pasadena, sits between Orange Grove Avenue, Pasadena Avenue to the east, and on State Street at Madeline. Our athletic field sits almost on top of the boring path of the 710 tunnel. When this first came up, the research is out there, so I'm not going to go into a lot of that, but my sole purpose, really, of being here is to convince you that this is indeed a child-centered issue and a educational issue. When this first came up, we didn't know a lot about it, but being an educational community full of education masters and PhDs, the first thing that we felt we needed to do was research. We recognized immediately that it could be extremely detrimental to the health and well-being of our students and all of the students in Pasadena. We have collaborations with Pasadena Unified School students. We host hundreds of your district's students on our campus every summer in our Partnership for Success program. We work with your extraordinary teachers in this program. We visit your campuses. We see this as though we are one school. We see, really, that our advocacy is on behalf of all of students in our community. We researched, we engaged experts in air quality, in geotechnical engineering, in traffic, in sound pollution. We put together about a 60-page response to the draft environmental impact report. Everything in that report, though we didn't go in expecting one way or the other, just researching, as we do, and everything in that report, 60 pages of negative potential, serious negative impact. So this is an educational issue. It is a child-centered issue, and we are fighting against the tunnel and hope that you will reconsider your abstention to the resolution and, again, join your partner school districts in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, John, I'm not sure if I'm going to say this right, Primata, Primati?
Good evening. I'm John Primath. I'm a business owner here in Pasadena. I'm also a resident of South Pasadena and serve on the South Pasadena Unified School Board, and I'm the South Pasadena representative on the Five Star Coalition. So I want to convey greetings from the South Pass School Board to you and also speak in favor of the resolution opposing the 710. We'd like to invite you to join Burbank and Glendale, La Cañada, and South Pasadena and support this resolution. The issue for me is pretty simple, and that is, when you have a construction project that's going to produce pollution, the solution to pollution is dilution. That's what everyone says. You disperse it. And this project is engineered to do the opposite, and it's engineered to concentrate the pollution and to kick it out in a hotspot. That hotspot happens to be pretty close to my town, but it's right in your town. And we've looked at the medical evidence that is continuing to link pollution to serious ailments like autism and other serious debilitating conditions. And one of the most sort of astounding things of how the project has moved forward is, they haven't really evaluated the health impacts of having a pollution hotspot. And when you don't know what effects may cause, particularly to children who are the most vulnerable, and you are a school district, and you have children who are in the zone of impact of that hotspot, I think it's appropriate to adopt a very protective stance. And that's really what this resolution does, is it says, "We oppose a project that does the reverse of dispersion of pollution and concentrates it in our city." I would, again, welcome you to join the other districts that have voted to oppose the 710 and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena Flager, or Flager?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elena Flager, and I'm the Director of Development and Communications at Sequoia School. Our school of 250 students overlooks the proposed north portal of the SR 710 freeway tunnel. As you can imagine, we follow this issue very, very closely. Given the analysis presented in the Caltrans-Metro Draft Environmental Study, we are deeply concerned about the implications for children's health presented in the documentation of the tunnel freeway alternative. In addition, given the potential for grave consequences for children, along with the Environmental Protection Agency, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the Five Cities Alliance, and others, we are alarmed by the inadequacy of the analysis presented. As educators like you, our focus is on the safety, health, and well-being of the children who arrive at our school to learn. We are well-aware of the studies, including those by USC, that point to the health impacts on children at schools located in proximity to freeways and freeway construction. We also know that those impacts do not remain limited in time, but persist throughout lives, with the potential for diminishing individual livelihoods, the vitality of our neighborhoods, and the effectiveness of our schools. We remain concerned about the existing issues with traffic in neighborhoods and schools impacted by the lack of a 710 alternative extension. However, we also believe that the proposed freeway alternative does not yet present the viable regional transportation solution we are all hoping for, or that we, as citizens and educators, should support. We know you are each looked to as advocates for students' health and well-being, as this directly impacts their ability to learn, and therefore, we urge the Board to support the Five Star Coalition resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mick Hansen?
Good evening, Chair, Superintendent, and Members. My name is Mick Hansen, and I am the Chair of Pasadena's Planning Commission, as well as Pasadena's representative to the Stakeholder Outreach Advisory Committee to Metro on this project. And as many speakers detailed, I will not repeat what they said, but the DEIR was inadequate and weak in its review of mitigation and measures, and used archaic and sometimes very old or inappropriate data, as we have heard from AQMD and EPA in their critique with their letters. And we need to use, first of all, current data to realize how detrimental this tunnel will be for our health, all of us, but especially children. The portal is surrounded by what is called sensitive receptors. These are Huntington Hospital, convalescent and elder care facilities, the Ronald McDonald House, and, most importantly, more than 10 schools. There are an additional, as Ms. Gavitt said, 130,000 vehicles that will be coming if that tunnel is completed. And once it exits the portal, roughly even with Old Pasadena and Marinatha School, it's going to be putting a tremendous amount of pollution into the air concentrated within all those schools. And children are the most vulnerable to this. Also, particulates that are larger, they're possible to be scrubbed by the quote-unquote "scrubbers" that they're going to install at the portal. But fine particulates, two-and-a-half microns and smaller, and some toxic gases, right now cannot be mitigated. So those are the most dangerous and most harmful to children and the elderly, and that's what our children will be breathing in a concentrated fashion. Once those vehicles leave the tunnel, 130 extra vehicles will be gridlocked on the 210 going east. And of course, you know what 210 is like now, so add 130,000 vehicles nearly stalled, and imagine what that will do to all the schools within breathing area of those standing trucks, idling trucks, and automobiles. That's also a hazard to our Pasadena children. Metro... Well, that's the end of my time, so I urge all of you to critically examine the data. More than 8,000 comments were submitted to Metro and Caltrans about the inadequacy of their study, and I urge you to please take note and protect the health and welfare of our area's children. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Blumenfeld?
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. My name's Andrew Blumenfeld. I just finished my term as Member and President of the Board of Education for the Locking Out of School District. I'm also a fifth-grade public school teacher. I did want to address, and I know some other speakers have, the questions I know some of you have about the relationship that exists between the proposed tunnel and the educational mission of this Board and this district. And I think that's the right question to ask, and I can assure you that the Locking Out of School District is as protective as I know you are about assuring that we only assert ourselves on behalf of our community on issues that truly do impact the mission of the school district. And I hope and will urge you to conclude, as we did, along with several other districts, including the others in the Five Star Coalition, that there is a profound, significant, and negative relationship between the proposed tunnel and the educational achievement of the students that you're elected to serve. You've heard articulated already the many ways in which that is true, and I think there's quite an expert consensus on that topic. So I'll just simply add that, as education leaders, we are tasked every day to make the case to our community and to the state about why it's so important that we address the needs of the whole child, and that we not limit our focus when it comes to improving the lives of the children we're entrusted to serve to only the four walls of the classroom. In fact, we heard a wonderful presentation just before this period on precisely the ways in which those many factors that happen outside the classroom impact the ability of a child to fully take advantage of the many educational opportunities that you all work so hard to provide for them. And I think that this Board understands that because you have unanimously passed in just the last year resolutions supporting everything from public libraries to after-school programs, to better nutrition, to walking, to school more often, all of these things that happen outside of the school but so impact whether or not the children show up ready to take full advantage of those educational opportunities, and, as has been said previously, whether they can even show up to school at all, as we know that one of the worst effects of this type of pollution is the way in which it robs children of the opportunity to even come to school every day because of the absenteeism associated with the negative health consequences. So I will urge you to please take a second look and understand, as I think many of your fellow colleagues across the region have done, in seeing that not only does this issue fall within the realm of the educational mission of this school district and this Board, but it actually strikes at the core of it. And I hope you will join your fellow districts on the Five Star Coalition so that we can, as a region, speak with one voice and communicate, not just to our state and to Caltrans, but to our broader community, how important it is that we unite and take a stand against anything that stands in the way of our children, fully realizing their potential, and seizing upon all the opportunities educationally that you provide for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Bogard?
I'm here on behalf of the No 710 Action Committee. This is an organization that was formed approximately six years ago. Some of the members are behind me here. We meet regularly, and our organization includes representatives from many communities in the West San Gabriel Valley, including but not limited to La Cañada, Pasadena South Pass, Sierra Madre, Highland Park, Beagle Rock, La Cerrana, El Sarino, and neighborhood councils from Los Angeles. We've been working in cooperation with a variety of mayors, staffs, and as well as other elected officials, and we also work with community leaders with expertise in transportation, mobility issues, air quality, and smart growth. As a group, we have focused on finding freeway alternatives that are sensible, environmentally sound, realistic, and ones that will provide the best transportation for our communities and for our region. We are committed to working in cooperation with the individual communities and helping them to address the varied transportation challenges. We support improving mobility, but only in ways that will not destroy businesses or neighborhoods or endanger the health of any of the local residents. The No 710 Action Committee is opposed to the tunnel because it is unrealistic, has disastrous negative environmental consequences, is dangerous, and is financially irresponsible. Our members have studied the draft environmental impact report, which you've heard about, and we join with the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and the Southern California Air Quality Management District in determining that the studies presented in the DEIR are deficient and almost even misleading. We join with EPA and SCAMQ, SCQMD, in calling for a new and thorough, serious study of air quality and health risks to local residents, especially children and the elderly. The No 710 Action Committee is working in cooperation with renowned health experts, including the respected Dr. Robert McConnell and Andrea Rico from USC, so that we are able to better understand the significant health risks to local residents, especially our children and the elderly, that would come from the 710 tunnel. I think you've heard a lot of background in that same subject. We direct you to the attachment from WPRA, which I think was sent to you in a letter, which lists the 50 schools, 14 medical facilities, 21 senior care facilities, and other facilities, the residents of which will suffer greatly from this increase of pollution from the freeway tunnels in the two hotspots that we've referred to. We strongly urge that the Pasadena Board of Education join with the Pasadena City Council, who just the other night, once again, indicated their total opposition to the tunnel, and with the other members of the Five Star Coalition, and oppose the 710 tunnel alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Cole?
My name is Steve Cole. I'm currently the incoming PTA President for Blair Middle and High School, and I have, obviously, two children in the district. And during my day job, I'm actually an environmental scientist as well. But I think you've heard all the technical information that has been put in front of you for the 710 freeway, so I'll delve into the human interest story. I grew up in Riverside in the 1970s. I was diagnosed with asthma when I was nine months old, and a lot of that was due to the air pollution quality at the time. It was absolutely horrendous at that time, especially out in Riverside, which is the end of the sink of the LA basin. When we'd wander out to elementary school, they used to put flags out on the playground. If it was a green flag, everything was good. If it was a yellow flag, you could still go out to recess, but you weren't allowed to run, you weren't allowed to do anything aerobic. If it was a red flag, it was a rainy day schedule, and you got to stay inside. Lot different now, and air quality is much, much better. However, the 710 freeway extension coming through is a major step backwards to the incrued air quality. I don't want my children or children in this district to be exposed to similar types of air pollution, even in pockets that I was as a child growing up. And I know you feel that a vote might be stepping out kind of the realm of what you're here to do and would be more largely symbolic than anything else. But a little bit ago, I was involved heavily in a campaign to pass an Eighth Guiding Principle at the City of Pasadena, and that was the main argument against adding the Eighth Guiding Principle to the general plan, was that this has no teeth, it's symbolic, it has absolutely nothing to do with the general plan, it doesn't need to be there. But I think all of you would agree that symbols matter, and that symbols have power, and that the Eighth Guiding Principle is something which has allowed the City of Pasadena and the school district to join together and been sort of a framework. And this seems to me to be a similar type of framework. So I urge you to take the symbolic vote, even if that's how you feel it is, and pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Fosselman?
Good evening, President Kenny, and members of the Board. My name is Jill Fosselman. I'm a current parent of a student at Chandler School. I'm also a past President of the Parent Association. I'm still intimately and very involved with the school, and I can tell you, from a parent's perspective, that's why I'm standing here. I'm not going to reiterate any of the science because I think they've done a wonderful job in sharing that, but I would say that I fully agree with the science that's been presented, and I want to take a little bit of a... And I want to take a little bit of a different tack, similar to the gentleman from Blair. And I'd like to point out some of the policy considerations that I think you should keep in mind as you contemplate joining your colleagues in the other four school districts. Philosophy as stated from your own policy. The philosophy of the district is that number four, you would maintain a safe nurturing environment that's necessary for learning. Number six, the ability of children to learn is affected by social, health and economic conditions and other factors outside the classroom. The role of the board. As you are well aware, the role of the board is providing community leadership and advocacy on the behalf of the students, the district's educational program and public education in order to build support within the local community and the state and the national levels. Under your governance standards of your bylaws, the very first sentence reads, "The governing board believes that its primary responsibility is to act in the best interests of every student in this district." I would argue that the medical evidence that's been presented by the EPA, by the Air Quality Management District, by a group of very revered scientists and medical professionals, presents a lot of medical evidence there that presents that you should hopefully pay attention to it. The next thing I'd like to bring up is your code of ethics. The board responsibility to the community, the very first bullet point here, is thinking always in terms of children first. It's about the kids, always. I run a retirement system for the city and as a fiduciary, our primary goal is to our retirees, even if our personal thoughts might be elsewhere, that is our fiduciary duty. I would argue that your fiduciary duty is to our children. Lastly, under your business and non-instructional operations, environmental safety says the superintendent may designate and train someone to recommend strategies for the prevention and mitigation of environmental health risks. Of most importance there, you have a whole section on indoor air quality and outdoor air quality. And lastly, the governing board recognizes its obligation to provide a self, safe and healthy environment at school facilities for students, staff and the community members. So I think when you're looking at how this impacts you and your role as a policy setter for the district of Pasadena, I think you need to be thinking about all of the governing documents that you've already adopted and that govern your actions as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was the last public comment card.
Can I just do one more?
Kenyon, we were so close, Kenyon, so close. Why don't you speak first and fill out later?
Good idea.
Kenyon?
Hello, how are you? My name's Kenyon Harbison. I'm the president of the West Pasadena Residents Association this year. Just wanted to first begin by, and I apologize for being a little late. Thank you all for reconsidering the 710 issue. It's very much appreciated. I'm a little bit at a disadvantage because I don't know exactly what has been said before I entered the room. But I will assume that, that the salient points have been addressed. And I want to thank you. We do feel that this is an educational related issue, that this does relate to the health of students in the district because of the proximity primarily of the exhaust ports to so many schools, as well as the additional traffic on the 210. And thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So I think as people probably have noticed, this is a board discussion on our agenda tonight, not a vote, and I believe that's what it was the last time as well.
Comments? Comments?
I was just going to try and kind of frame this. I don't know if we want to go around one by one and kind of weigh in, if we want to hear from Larry first or if Larry would like to go last?
I'll go last.
All right.
I'll go first.
And so in terms of what's before us today, I think, just to kind of frame it, the conversation we had last time, and I, I think we've heard it couched a number of different ways, you know, is this within our jurisdiction? And I guess if people feel that it is, what's their position? And we can share this with Larry and then we can talk about what that means afterwards. Oh, unless you want to?
Can I give a little history on that?
Yes, please.
Let me, let me start by saying I'm, I'm a member of the Five Star Coalition and I'm, I'm Pasadena's representative to the Five Star Coalition, which is five school districts that meet monthly, you know, to talk about things that are happening in districts. And, and this resolution came up. And, and it was brought back to each district to get, you know, to see if the, the different boards were interested in passing this resolution. It has been reported that I, I don't know, sank the resolution or whatever that is, but, but I'm a representative of Pasadena Unified on that committee. And we as a, as a board voted to abstain from that resolution unanimously. And, and so that was the vote that I brought to Five Star. And, and, and so consequently, there has been further discussions and, and that has brought us here today. Okay? Is that fair?
Thank you. Mr. Bogart?
Personally, I'm opposed to the tunnel 100% and I will fight for it, against it wholeheartedly. And all of you, you seem like educated people, experts in the field. What I am hoping not to see, and I'm not saying it will, but I'm not, I'm hoping not to see that in future meetings, another group of people come with a ton of research claiming against it. And we get stuck in a political fight. Again, I'm hoping it will not happen and I am going to fight with you. That's it.
Mr. Cahill?
So I'm, I'd like to thank the doctor for bringing actual citationable research. I consider, I, I work at Caltech, I'm a PhD student myself, I'm a strong believer in science-based policy. My impression of the 710 tunnel issue as far as the science went, when we last talked about this, was that the, not that there was any argument that, that pollution can be a negative impact on children, but to what extent it was. And my reading of the area, of the South Coast Air Quality Management District document was, their main complaint was that they thought the draft EIR was not good enough, as opposed to that they thought that it was covering things up or, or leading to there being possible. So anyway, I, I have revised my attitude about that because one nice thing about working at Caltech and being a grad student at Claremont Graduate University is you have ready access to two different high-quality research laboratories. And so unlike most of the general American public, I don't have to rely on news reports for stuff. I can actually look it up and answer questions. And I found a number of really alarming statistics regarding air pollution and child development and more specifically, air pollution in Southern California. I think, I don't remember the citation, but the good doctor probably does, that the estimated amount of early fatalities in the South Coast Air Quality Management District due to air pollution alone in the state of California is 22,000 people a year, which is incredible. I mean, that's more than we get from firearm homicides. And we all know how this week, that, that is currently a huge topic on the national news, and yet people really don't talk about pollution in the same way. So I, I'm, I've also been a little bit more convinced by looking at the relationship between the EPA and the South Coast Air Quality Management District and Metro, that the, the EPA and the Air Quality Management District are not always entirely heard by, by Metro. And so my confidence in the other branches of government to do their job responsibly is not as solid as it might otherwise be. So given the existing evidence, and although I, I have heard a, a number of pointed and interesting objections based on trends and pollution standards changing on cars and scrubber technology and all that stuff, the, my natural inclination to conservatism when it comes to environmental issues, conservatism in the classic sense as opposed to the modern American political sense, is to err on the side of caution. So I, I'm inclined to change my feeling about this and say, I, I think it is. Related enough to education that I don't, I don't feel uncomfortable weighing in on it and demonstrably more likely than not to be a problem in that area. So I, I feel comfortable saying that I feel differently about it now in the last two months. So that's me.
Thank you. Dr. Palmeri?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming to, to speak to us about this. I, I can remember, my family first came to Southern California in the 50s. So I remember when the smog was brown and it was yellow and you could smell the smog. So we mustn't go backward. So I, I am persuaded that this is an issue that we should address. And I think that we, although it isn't an action item per se, I think our role is to, is to advise our representative and, and then he will, he will go and take the vote in the Five Star Meeting. Is this correct? But if we, if we reach a consensus that this is, that we do want to indicate our opposition to this tunnel, then I think that is a message we would convey to our representative, Mr. Torres, and, and also to all of you. So I am definitely persuaded to, that we should take that position to oppose the tunnel.
Do we want to read Scott's statement? Because he gave us a, there's a written.
This is true. Yes. Ms. Rona, was that the intent? To, to read, no, to read his statement or, I just don't want to?
All right. So Mr. Phelps wrote, "Dear colleagues, I will be traveling with my family on June 16th, so I wanted to write to you to ask that you consider revising our position for the Five Star Resolution opposing the 710 Tunnel from an abstention to support of the Resolution opposing the Tunnel. The residents in my trustee area are overwhelmingly opposed to the idea and there may even be momentum building in the city for repurposing the stub area where the tunnel would end up on our end where Caltrans stores materials these days. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Scott Phelps."
I, oh, I was gonna, you wanted to go last, right? And while I, I hear that people are talking about it is child-related and education-related and I, I'm not in disagreement with that. For me, this came much more about, is it within our jurisdiction? And my feeling as a representative and what we've been presented with prior to tonight, I mean, to, that I would have all the sides of this issue and have considered them in enough depth to place a vote. So I still feel that it's not within our jurisdiction and so I wouldn't be ready to express my opinion tonight in, in any case, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I came, I had a great, I came here, I guess, thinking that, I, I've thought a lot about this over the last couple of weeks. And I came here prepared to suggest we abstain again. And the reason was, is because I'm very concerned about us stepping outside of our, our governance bounds. And the, I think schools and school districts have gotten ourselves into great trouble and, and, and have lost a lot of public support because we have taken on, or attempted to take on, many of the, the ills of society and said, well, we can do that, you know, I mean, because schools touch so many things and, and touch so many lives in so many different ways that, that I think for, for a very long period of time, schools have said, you know, we will, we can fix all the problems in society. And, and then as we attempted to do that and found we couldn't or found we were ill-equipped, we, we, I think that took us away from the mission of what schools are about, and that's to educate children. And so when this first came up, that was, my question was, is this within our purview? And I had this great egg story that I wanted to wash, whether we should wash eggs or not, but that I was going to bring, but I'm not. Because the, the speakers tonight, I think, have, have changed my mind on this. And, and I, you know, I, I try as best I can to, you know, be a good reader and be a good listener and, and try to take in facts as, as best I can, like, like I think most folks do. But until this meeting, I was not prepared to say that, that this was within our governance area. And I think that the speakers, and especially my good friend, Mr. Primuth from, from South Pasadena, who spoke so eloquently, ma, made a convincing case for me. So I, I would also vote to confirm this resolution, so.
So then the next step, is there one more remaining Five Star Meeting then?
It's next week.
Okay. And so then that will, I'm assuming that's on the agenda for that meeting and you will?
I can.
And hopefully you'll be attending.
I can certainly, no, I will be. And, and I will forward our, our sentiments and see if we can get that posted.
Great.
Okay.
Could I add one more thing?
So that will be the next step to move this Five Star Resolution forward.
Could I add one more thing?
Yes.
Yes, I especially commend, and I don't remember just which one of you it was, but the person who clearly did her homework by looking at all of our documents and quoting to us what our own documents are. So I think that's an excellent example of, of making a public statement and I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We are moving on then to...